Of New Windsor Town Council Meeting for February 6, 2019. I'm going to call on Connor Summers to come forward from Troop 582. He's working on a merit badge tonight, so if everyone would stand and join with me and look at the flag, and Connor will lead us all from the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda for discussion by the council should have had it to Town Hall by 3:00 o'clock the previous Wednesday of the previous month. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, we ask you to sign up over here. Approval of minutes from January 2nd, 2019. They have been emailed out by Donalds multiple times. They're Tab 3. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pauls Grove got you just a second. Maybe that's my bad ear. We have a motion by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Pauls Grove, to approve the minutes from January 2nd, 2019 meeting. All those in favor, sing if I'm not saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so carry. Reports, council committees, Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Good evening, everyone. In the last month, the Public Works crew has handled several small winter storms that we've had. I think they've done a great job. They've been out plowing and salting so that we can continue to drive on our streets. And from everything I could tell, they've done a super job. They've used about 45 tons of salt this year already, probably a little bit more than that from the last storm. So these small little snows, they use a lot of salt because it's more salt than actually is plowing. They've created a log sheet now that they're making track of the salt usage so we can have a better idea of what they're using. They've also spent some time installing the radio reads for the water meters. And as you all know, they've did three, completed three Christmas tree pickups this, in January, and took down all the decorations from the town park and stored them away so that we can use them again in the future. Other than that, that's it for the planning committee, for the public works. The planning commission did not meet in January.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman Huffman? Water and sewer, Councilman Pauls Grove.
I think it was shared with council that we had a sewer back up on Route 31. And according to Jack, well, the causes for that were shared that maybe there were inappropriate products placed in the sewer. And that may be possible, but the major culprit is kind of a problem with the design of the particular manhole, which created a way in which it choked up. And Jack's working on some remedies to that, to keep that from happening again. Other than some normal cold weather maladies that we might have with water treatment plant, everything is flowing as well as it could be. Correct, Mr. Coe?
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Any questions for Councilman Pauls Grove? Public Safety, Councilman Smith.
Good evening, everybody. I will defer to the deputy for his monthly report. I would like to thank everybody for their cooperation during the snow events with the snow emergency. I know that that can be a difficult situation for all of us. I know sometimes it's very inconvenient. And there may be times that our citizens don't agree that a snow emergency has been placed into effect. That snow emergency is placed into effect by the state, and we simply follow the state. And I know that there were a few people that the deputy had to speak to, to get them to move the cars off the roads. But as inconvenient as that is, it is imperative that we keep following that rule and that law, because it makes it easier for us to get the roads open and make them safe for everybody. So it is inconvenient. I thank those that are diligent about that. I have the same problem as everybody else. I have vehicles, more vehicles than I have driveway space, so I have to find alternatives too. And I thank you, Deputy, for staying on top of that. I know you were out that day. I heard about it, and we were able to get everything done. I see that Chief Tom Coe is not here. I do want to thank publicly the fire departments of New Windsor, Mount Airy, and Winfield. There was a fire out on 31. In my other job as a humane officer for animal control for Carroll County, we were asked to assist on that by Chief Coe. He called me. There were seven animals trapped inside that house. Unfortunately, all seven animals did perish in that house, all seven pets. The professionalism and the compassion shown by the fire department, who ultimately were the ones that bring the animals out to us, was beyond compare. The captain took it upon himself to make sure the animals were completely covered. And he did that not only for the pet owners, but for the first responders that were there. So it did not affect them as tragically. But they were wonderful in doing their job. They got the fire out. And the reason I mention that is it was ultimately discovered that the fire was a result of a chimney, creosote buildup in the chimney. The homeowner had recently cleaned the chimney, but because of the design of the chimney, the brush simply wasn't fitting properly. So if you have a fireplace, please, please, please make sure it's properly done, preferably by a professional who knows what they're doing, that can clean that fireplace out so we don't have tragedies. Luckily, nobody, no human lost in that fire, but there were seven, or yeah, seven animals that were lost. And the owners are dealing with that. But again, thank you to the fire departments for that. We have seen an increase, again, in my other job, we have seen an increase with animals running at large, dogs running at large in New Windsor for some reason. I don't know why. Just to remind everybody, that is a law. You have to maintain your dog on your property. And your dog has to have Carroll County license and rabies vaccines. Rabies vaccines is state law. Carroll County license is a county law or ordinance. Those are available. You can buy them at the town office. The dog tags, as long as you have current rabies vaccines on your dogs. And they start incurring late fees come March 1st, so make sure you get your dog tags. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple things you brought up, and I meant to bring this up with Councilman Huffman because it kind of plays in both Public Works and Public Safety, and that's the parking during snow emergency plan, as Councilman Smith related to. There was a lot of people that didn't like the plan when we had a half inch of ice, and the guys came down and sawed it and didn't plow, you know? But I mean, you can't pick and choose the policy once the plan goes into effect. So is everybody still on board with the zero parking on the streets?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And then also, Councilman Smith, you talked about your other job. Does the Carroll County Humane Society, or Humane Society Carroll County, I think it is, put chips in animals?
They are. Actually, there's a free, they coincided it with the month of February for Valentine's Day. There's a campaign going on where they are going to chip your animals for free starting next weekend. After that, you can still get your animals chipped there, and we, it's at cost. We don't charge anything extra. I believe, I believe it's $10 maybe to have your animal chipped there regularly, but they're going to do them for free to coincide with Valentine's Day. So it's a good idea to get out there and do that. That program is new this year, and it's a great way to get your pets back. I can't tell you how many times, as an animal control officer, we'll pick up an animal in the field. We all carry the scanners. We'll scan it, run it right in the field, and maybe we'll return the animal without even taking it back to the shelter. So it saves stress on your animal being placed in the van and driven back to a shelter and put into a kennel. It's better for animal control officers. It's safer for us getting animals in and out of a van. You don't know what you're dealing with with that. And it ends up costing people a lot less, because you may have to pay a fine for having your animal running at large, but you don't have to pay the impound fee out at the county. So yeah, microchips are the best way to go, and we do have that program running. Thank you for bringing it up.
Can you put something on Facebook?
I can.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Any questions or comments for Councilman Smith? All right. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz.
The Economic Development Group is meeting later this month. The Carroll County Downtown's will hopefully all have a report about that. There is a, I mentioned at the work session last week, the town of Sykesville and the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce are sponsoring a small town development seminar on, I think it's a Tuesday, February 27th, and I believe it's at 6:30. And that information is on the Sykesville Town website and on the Carroll County Downtown's Facebook page. If I could just chime in on the snow thing, since I do a lot of work on the Facebook page, I had a first responder respond on there, how much they appreciated the vehicles being moved out of the way too. So if you just think about two or three cars in the way and snow in the way, and then the ambulance or fire truck trying to get through, you know, you have to think about the big picture. And just also, the Facebook page is not going to be a place where we have really big, long conversations with people, because we all have full-time jobs too. We just don't have time to do that. So while we're happy to respond, and I did put a long response on there this afternoon, but in general, it's probably better just to email any of us, or send us a message, and we'll call you if you'd like. And that's a lot faster than typing sentences back and forth for an hour or so.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Councilwoman Schultz?
Is there a way we can get some communication about the snow removal and cars parked and any kind of email from the town?
Are you on the town Facebook page?
I think.
Because Councilwoman Schultz has put it on there multiple times.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the best place, just to go to, go on Facebook and look and see if you're in the group. And if you're not, just look for the town of New Windsor.
Can I like, do I like the New Windsor? I'm not.
You asked to join.
You know what? If you want to stay after for a minute, I'll show you how to do it.
Yeah.
And then that'll be the easiest way, because either the mayor or I post stuff almost immediately, and the rest of the council, you know, sends us stuff and everything. So we try to keep that. As soon as we know, we usually post something.
Soon as I get a page from the fire service that the snow emergency plan is going to affect, I put it on within minutes. Usually, it might be, say, if it went on 11:00 a.m. this morning, I usually get it by 11:05 or something like that, so. All right?
And also, if you hear that the snow emergency is in effect in Carroll County, it's in effect in our town.
Right.
We post that on the website as well.
Yeah. Yeah. So it is posted out there. And even though, you know, we may not be seeing anything here, Mount Airy or Sykesville area, Hampstead, could be getting two or three inches, and that's when it goes into effect. So we still go by the whole, as Councilman Smith said, the whole county goes at one time. Thank you. Community Enhancement, Councilwoman Custom.
I don't have a big report this month, because I was out of town quite a bit this month, but I am on the MML Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee, which meets every Thursday in Annapolis between now and the end of the session. And I will report back next time with what's new before the legislature.
One thing I'd like for you to keep updated on for all of the council members is the 5G. Are you familiar with that?
Right.
That could be, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the 5G. Your phone is 4G. 5G, I think, is on the horizon. And to put the 5G into effect, if I'm saying this right, there'll be boxes on telephone poles, electric poles, and they could be extremely ugly. And we would have very little to zero control over them. And I think we have very little control possibly, if it passes, on getting revenue from those.
Well, as far as the ugly goes, we do have control over the aesthetics of it. So we can put into play ordinance that specify the aesthetics of those boxes. We have no control over whether they put them in or not, once the legislation is in effect.
We have some control on the design, but now like in Atlee and Blue Ridge, and where there's no telephone poles, we can, I think, enforce them underground. So that might be part of where we can.
Isn't that already in a done deal? Maybe we've got to do it. Do we have to?
The 5G is still being...
Because they keep advertising it.
It'll come out in the big cities first.
Right. But where we may, where we may see an impact is, I think Comcast is looking at this very closely, because if the phone companies don't have to pay, then why should they? And then we could lose some revenue from that, so.
I'm just really concerned about that.
So you could also do, so there's TV over 5G too, so you could technically, I believe you can tax television, not cell phone.
Yeah.
It's, that's a great area.
Right. So just keep us updated.
Will do.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Custom? Mayor's Report, Tab 5 first. I'd like to thank everybody. Dorm surgery. I had back surgery on the 22nd of January, and things have been extremely well on the recovery. Thank everybody for your thoughts and prayers, cards, and offers to drive for me, so thank you again. If you didn't know, I've been released Monday, so everything is looking good. I still have a little bit of weight limit I can lift, more than 15 pounds for a while, but thank you, everybody. Did give me time as the bottom down there, worked on the sustainable communities application. Being off work for two weeks, I was able to knock a lot of that out. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to take a look at that and add, edit. You're not going to hurt my feelings by adding to it. It's something I forgot. I know Gary showed me today, he's got a fair amount that he added to it, so take a look at that. We don't have to have it in by this Friday. I was hoping we could get a draft in, but if we don't, that's fine. We already have an extension from the state on that. But take a look at it. If nothing else, it gives you probably, Sandy, it might help you more of what has happened in the last five years, and gives you a little idea of what took place, what didn't take place that we had hoped to have in place, and then going forward what we'd like to see. So your input is very valuable on that. I guess it was two Maryland Municipal League chapter dinners ago that I brought up about having emergency equipment and emergency contractor list compiled. And Steve Miller, who's the Manchester Town Manager, put it all together. He has a list of all the equipment in case there was a disaster in New Windsor, what we could, what would be available in the other seven municipalities. And he's going back and forth with me. I contacted Michelle, our town attorney, about having an MOU. So he's, I think he got one from the county that we can probably plug in a few things and for liability and insurance purposes, so that if our equipment, our dump truck or something was needed in Ian Bridge, you know, something happened to, you know, just to cover everything. But give a lot of credit to Steve. He's been in the fire service for many years in the Hall of Fame, I think, and he has that list together. So once we get the MOU, then every municipality will have a list to all the contractors and contractor lists, or the equipment list. So hopefully, we never need it, but it'll be a lot better there. We had thought about including the county. However, we just feel that if there's a disaster in any of our municipalities, we're going to get the county folks as well. So that's why we didn't include them, but they're pretty much going to be included anyway. Any questions or comments? Community Deputy.
The Carroll County Sheriff's Office, between the dates of January 1 of 19 to January 31 of 19, responded to 69 calls for service within town limits. Out of those 69 calls for service, only six required reports, which were the following. On January 2, 2019, at approximately 12:25 p.m., deputies responded to the Carroll County Sheriff's Office in reference to a violation of a protective order. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the victim lived in the 1100 block of Joe Apter Place. Investigation revealed that the victim currently had a temporary protective order in place with the respondent, who continued to contact the victim by sending them electronic messages. Charges were filed in reference to the violation, and case was closed by arrest. On January 5, 2019, at approximately 7:50 p.m., deputies responded to the 2800 block of New Windsor Road for a report of a stolen wallet. Investigation revealed that the victim had dropped their wallet in the parking lot and was unable to locate it once they observed it missing. Investigation revealed that juveniles located the wallet and provided it to their parents, while it was later returned the next day to the victim with nothing stolen. Case was closed. On January 8, 2019, at approximately 5:20 p.m., deputies responded to the 100 block of Church Street in reference to a theft. Upon arrival, it was learned that the unknown suspects stole items from a locked residence while family members were at home. Upon interviewing family members, they advised that they did not witness or hear anything during the timeframe that the items were stolen. Case remains open. On January 15, 2019, at approximately 1:32 p.m., deputies responded to the 1100 block of Joe Apter Place in reference to a theft. Investigation revealed that unknown suspects used victim's bank credit card online and purchased pet supplies in Colorado. Investigation remains open, or case remains open. On January 16, 2019, at approximately 4:30 p.m., deputies responded to the sheriff's office in reference to a missing person. Upon arrival, it was learned that the complainant was from the 400 block of Hillside Drive. Investigation revealed that the missing person failed to contact the complainant over several days, which was out of the ordinary. It was further discovered that the missing person was currently homeless and was last seen in Howard County along Interstate 70. During the investigation, it was learned that the missing person was arrested in Baltimore City days prior to them going missing. As a result, the missing person's vehicle was later located in Baltimore City impound lot, where their phone was also located. After a two-week investigation, the missing person was later located in a motel in Baltimore County. Case was closed. On January 31, 2019, at approximately 10:26 a.m., deputies responded to the 2800 block of Carlisle Drive in reference to a fraud. Upon arrival, it was discovered that the victim was contacted by a person representing a fraudulent computer technical company. The suspect was able to talk the victim into having their computer cleaned, which was then completed by remote access. Suspect then demanded money, at which time the victim provided, or the victim then provided their bank account information to suspect. Case remains open. In reference to the snow emergency rounds, as you know, trying to crack down the snowstorm on January 13th, there was 50 violations that were issued that day alone. So hopefully, people are starting to understand that we are enforcing it. And the next time, it will probably be ticket and or tow, so, or both. So if it's going to snow, remove your vehicles from the roadway. Simple as that. Other than that, March, I will be going for two days for training to be bicycle certified. So in the spring and summertime, I will be out on the bike, hopefully. And with that, please don't hit me for any drivers driving. So other than that, that's all I got.
Any questions?
The 50, they were, were they warnings?
They were warnings the first time. My supervisor is trying to be nice, where I'd rather hit the point home quicker, but he said that I need to issue one more round of warnings before I start issuing citations, but just so that people are aware.
Just one clarification. I heard that someone said they were issued a citation.
They were not issued any citations. They only issued warnings. I did threaten one person with a citation, as he was complaining about the warning that I issued him, so. And I did forget to mention, I did receive a message today about the electronic speed sign needing calibrated. It does not need calibrated. I checked it out tonight on my way in, and what I did was to, in order to save battery juice, I actually don't have it activated until 30, so it will flash at 30. The individual said that they were going 25, but it was reading 33. It's probably picking up the vehicle behind them. So, but other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Where is the, where can you park in New Windsor during a snowstorm?
So pretty much all of Blue Ridge Development, all of Atlee Ridge Development, Church Street, Lambert Avenue, Hillside Drive.
Your private street.
That's private.
Your private street.
You're good.
Out there.
But we're still on New Windsor.
We don't plow that until it's turned dark.
Oh, okay.
Right?
I don't think they'll.
And then College Avenue.
So you're good. You're getting Park and Mill Street, and you've got to deal with your neighbors, but you don't have to deal with us.
No, 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 no.
It's pretty much every street in town. You pretty much cannot park on any street in, in New Windsor. Any public street. Yeah. Any public street in Incorporated New Windsor, you cannot park on.
But I'm sure when they plow the reserve, they appreciate all cars off the road.
Off the road.
So, and for information for the snow emergency, again, Facebook, website, and also they can look at Merlin Chart, which is the State Highway Administration that they posted on there. Sometimes it looks like they post it well after the fact, because the day that it went into effect, I checked it, and it wasn't, it went into effect at 7:00 p.m., but it wasn't posted until like 10:00 p.m. for some reason, so.
Sometimes you have to scroll down in order to see it, too.
Yep. So, all right, that's all I got.
Thank you. West Carroll Rec Council, no one's here. Fire Chief Tom's not here. Their annual Fireman's Banquet is this Saturday. They are being recognized for 70 years of service, so if you told me that you were going, please attend. And they do a lot for us, so I'd like for us to be able to support them as well.
It's up to 5:30 right there.
5:30, dinner at 6:30. Town Manager, Tab 6.
Okay, I'm going to summarize here. You guys have a detailed report. I'll give more detail when I go in. Let me know. On 209 High Street Purchase, I met with the owner's apartment behind us, and we worked through some details and specifics of the MOU and the EVO. And so that's all been worked out, and I have marked up copies of both of those and given to Michelle tonight. She'll revise those, and I'll get them back to the shoulders for one last review and approval on that. So that's going well. We also got two estimates from local engineering surveying firms for the geographic survey and parking operating site plan as part of the, or part of what we need to do with 209 High Street. I'm going to get one more on Monday, I'm meeting with another firm out of Westminster, get a third price, so after that, we'll be in a position to make a decision on which firm we want to go with. We received the cost estimates from the local contractor that was working with us and assisting us, and I put those over in the volume. I had done a list of improvements, and then once I got the cost estimates from the contractor, I've added those in. And I have emailed them to Pencil &amp; Associates, who is the firm that did the appraisal, and also emailed those to the bank, from the emergency bank. And then that email, I requested to the bank to provide us with a new settlement date, which we should be, we should be far enough along to pin down a date for that. I'm anticipating and hoping it's going to be the end of this month. So I'm waiting for confirmation with the bank.
And the estimate, if you don't mind, is Tab 8.
Yep.
And you just want to touch briefly on that, which I think was... And you just wanted to touch briefly on that, which I think was very close to what we estimated, even though it is an estimate, so.
So, yeah. Basically, just summarized, the contractor broke down a little more detail specifically, but I summarize, for instance, under the public meeting room estimate, there were, I think, one, two, three, there were six different numbers that total that, that cost estimate totaled, which you see there. So, I'm just summarizing wherever we need to keep. I thought it was pretty close to where we want to be. It will go out eventually. Once we have settlement and purchase of property, then we'll have to do an RFP for those improvements and put that out and get actual comment adjusting on what that would be detailed down. All right. On Blue Ridge College improvement project, we, January 30, I should have received Arrow Consulting for the additional design and engineering services for basically getting the plans back revised into phases. We're going to have phase one, phase two, and that is at the direction of the State Department of Housing and Community Development to go that route. So, I'm expecting a schedule the end of this week, hopefully, from Arrow as to when we think we'll be able to be ready to go back out. We have to re-advertise it and get it on, there's a certain date that we have to set up for that process. It should have something, I'm guessing that it will be ready in about two weeks to start the process. That's all I have on the old business, Neil.
All right.
One new business is a budget thing, so I can do that a lot later.
All right. Thank you. So, any questions or comments for Town Manager's report?
I have one. Gary, do you think it's possible that you could bring extra copies of your report so that people who come to the meetings could follow along?
Sure.
Because they're very informative and I think it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, because I was going to ask for the same thing.
And hopefully, when we have a new town hall, it'll be up on the screen.
Yeah, the plan.
That'd be great.
Or even email.
Gary does a good job.
Yep. Treasurers' report, Donna, tab seven.
Balances as of the end of January for 2019 are as follows. The general fund balance is $255,522.85. General fund capital budget balance is $175,522.61. The enterprise fund balance is $250,125.71. Enterprise capital reserve and three Rs, $273,161.74. Developer fees balance, $842,405.96. Money market, $30,491.80. And lagoon remediation, $199,161.65. Any questions on the numbers? And real property, there's 14 properties for sale. Most of those, half of those are in the reserve, and five properties in the foreclosure process. Water sewer bills, as you all know, were mailed out. Probably already received yours and paid them. First late charges will be assessed this Friday, and thankfully, we had no turnoffs. We had several people that I had to contact, but most folks paid, and we all have a few I'm working with on some special payment arrangements. And the election information is now, the certificate of nomination forms are on the website as of yesterday, so everything's open. Last day to file for that is Monday, April 15. This is all on the website. And the last day to register to vote is Monday, April the 8th. And there's three council seats coming up for the election in May. It's Councilwoman Schultz, Councilman Huffman, and Councilwoman Cusson. So, any questions?
Thank you, Donna. I also want to let you know, I think the whole council appreciates you working with residents when they have trouble paying their water and sewer bills.
Always, yeah.
Thank you for everything you do.
You're welcome.
Lehigh, Sumant, no one's here. Old business, the top two very covered. The 1,000 Green Valley Road Arena Complex impact study. I'd just like to start out by saying that our work session last week, we had a lot of feedback, a lot of discussion, and several legitimate concerns, and my recommendation is that we forego the impact study at this time and probably not even pursue it any time in the future. However, if we wanted to pursue the resident survey, we could discuss that at a work session. Do you need a motion?
I don't think so. There was never anything actually introduced. It was just discussed, so we're not doing anything with it. We can just stop talking about it.
When is the work session?
Normally, the third Monday of each month. However, with President's Day on the 18th, we're moving it to the 19th.
Can anybody come?
Yes. Yeah, they're all open meetings.
Will the 19th meeting be here or across the street?
I believe it's here.
Okay.
We will post it, though.
Usually, they're here, but if it's a holiday, sometimes this room is not available to us, and hopefully, that'll be resolved once we get a real town hall.
Won't have to post.
Won't have to post anything. You know where it'll be.
Any other old business? New business? Fiscal year 20 budget update, kind of like tab six and nine, I think, Gary.
Nine is just the budget schedule of year, and I think we just follow the same spread of time and planning of meetings that have come in the past that keep on track with being able to do all requirements of introducing the budget at a certain time and having the public hearing and adoption and all that by the time required. So, that's in your binders there. So, just, you know, FY '20 budget process is underway. I've been working on draft worksheet with Donna and Wayne. We had a few meetings already to discuss things and assist and familiarize both myself and Wayne with the budget processes. We're new to New Windsor's budget. Getting Wayne involved, at least on the public works side, I think it'll be a good experience for him and help him understand how the budget works and in particular, his planning for public works. So, I'm planning on meeting with Donna on Fridays for the next, I don't know, month or two to try to finalize things. And also, we're going to sit down with Neil at some point once I get the numbers in. We have year-to-date numbers input in now, and we started working, we have proposed figures in for the general fund revenues, and we started working on the general fund expenditures. Did receive MES's proposed budget for FY '20, and those numbers ended the working draft. I think it was a very modest increase considering what I've seen from when I was at the county and working with MES in the past. So, the water portion of the budget increased $1,541 for basically a 2% increase, and the sewer portion increased $3,341 for 3.1% increase. So, it gives the overall water and sewer budget increase of about 2.67% overall, so I think that's pretty modest and reasonable there.
Usually, 3% is average probably most times.
Sewer's a little higher because sewers are bigger budget in general. You know, but just for comparison, the water budget for them is proposed for FY '20 is almost $79,000, and the sewer budget is $108,006, about. So, it's just proportionally a little different. So, I think overall, it's pretty reasonable. And like I said, I'll be following, there'll be more to come at the work session. I'm hoping to have the majority of the revenues in, and we'll be discussing in a little more detail based on that schedule of the next week that's coming up.
What's the reason for the in-putting sewer?
That MES is Maryland Environmental Service. They oversee our water and sewer. They do the testing, daily testing. Minor issues they'll take care of, they'll handle.
They'll report.
Do all the testing, all the reporting to the state. If we did it, we'd have to probably, I won't say double, but probably one and a half times if we had our own personnel doing it.
They run, they basically run the water and sewer plant.
They increase their charge to us, and thus, we need to increase the charge to users.
I know, I'm getting increased.
Well, we may have some good news, too, so hang in there.
Gary, I'd just like to commend you for getting our public works, particularly Wayne, involved in the budgeting process. I think it's most helpful to have the guys that have their feet on the ground involved. Kudos for that.
Yep. Any other new business? Residents concerned? Connor, any concerns, questions? Come on, throw a tough one out at us. All right. Hey, just in the future, though, if you need any other merit badge, come back. If you get to, I don't know, what's your rank right now?
Ten foot.
Okay, ten foot, so you're just starting in the Boy Scouts. Okay. I remember those days. If you get to the Eagle Scout level or even any time in between and you need to do a project, come let us know and see what we can provide an opportunity for you. Okay? Good job. Couple announcements, don't forget the Fireman's Banquet Sunday evening.
Saturday.
Saturday evening, what did I say? I'm looking at Sunday here.
If you don't, until Sunday.
Yeah. It won't be crowded, but Sunday, March 10, 3:00 PM, at Uncle Matty's, I will be putting on a presentation about Rupp's Grocery. So, looking forward to that.
Is that a Sunday, you said?
That is a Sunday.
That's under the auspices of the Heritage Committee.
Yes.
Don't forget that.
Yes.
Part of our history talk.
Yes.
What time is that?
3:00 PM.
It's history talk number two.
So, it'll be at Uncle Matty's, where, if you don't know, was Rupp's Grocery. So, Sunday, March 10. Out of town? All right.
The Heritage Committee is hoping to provide a free beverage for everyone that.
Shirley would like me to find the apron, but I don't think I can find the apron anymore, so I'll have to dig something out. So, and then also, it's starting to take a little more steam going forward with our 175th birthday planning. It's not really a committee, it's just open to the public now. So, we had a meeting this past Monday. Monday, yes. Well-attended. You don't have to be a resident of New Windsor. If you're concerned about New Windsor, love New Windsor, come on out. The next meeting will be, I think, here, but I'll post it. I haven't checked on the opening, the possibility, I haven't in here, but Thursday, February 28 at 7:00 PM. So, we have an individual right outside of town that has, I've mentioned this before, some vintage motorcycles. He has one that's over 100 years old.
Wow.
And he has some friends that have some vintage motorcycles, so I think it could be a huge event. We're looking into some other events. St. Paul has a couple of things. They'll have one event out at the Strawbridge Shrine where Methodism started in the United States, and that's going to be in June, I believe. Last time I talked to Tommy at the Fireman's Parade, the first full weekend in June to get more antique apparatus to come. Now, I may mention it to them at the Fireman's Meeting Monday. It's always Wednesday night at 7:00 PM sharp. It's been that way for 70 years or give or take, but whether or not they would entertain either the Carnival weekend, I know by Saturday, everybody's pretty well burnt out from working the entire week, to have a parade on Saturday afternoon or maybe another time of the year to have just the antique apparatus and then be on display for people to look at, so. But come out Thursday, February 28, 7:00 PM, and I'll post exactly where, but for right now, we'll pencil it in here. Anything else? Any concerns? Thank you for coming out. Do I hear a motion for a German?
Make that motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second for a German. All those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Okay.
This is what we like. This is what we like.
Forty-five minutes.